Now, so it's ready.
Well, then we can our needs.
Did you behave?
Yeah.
I got a lot of complaints about you. Three people called me.
No, he was in Pittsburgh.
Whatever they said. First, I thought it was Dallas. It was last year you went, right? No, no. I can tell you names. You know, I have. I'm watching.
See him coming?
This is a look back in coming to where we are today. The slide before you is where we've been. It's the reorganizational chart progression. So let me just take you back looking at the beginning of FY '24. We had eighteen full-time employees, six three-quarter, thirty-hour benefited staff, and seventy-five, give or take, part-time staff. At MAFC, there was a retention incentive in place, paying out lifeguards who worked a minimum of forty hours a month. We were very challenged with retaining lifeguards. And then you'll also hear that same sentiment where we were challenged with retaining counselors for our youth programming division. Specifically at MAFC, looking at that retention incentive plan, it not only include that payout to lifeguards who are working a minimum of forty hours a month, it also identified a critical shift. That was an addition of two dollars to the base pay, taking the hourly rate to thirteen dollars. And that critical time was from open to 5:00 PM. So it was the bulk of our hours. Then there was a referral recruitment incentive in place. Any non-exempt Tana-Morsel staff who recruited a lifeguard received a hundred dollars for the recruitment and the hiring of a new lifeguard. And that lifeguard also received a hundred dollars. The hours were restricted at MAFC due to the staffing limitations for our program pool and for the play structure. This may be shocking, but our play structure was only open four percent of our operating hours. And our program pool was operating forty percent of our operating hour time. The pool area was also closed daily for cleaning, one hour, Monday through Friday, from 1:30 to 2:30, and thirty minutes on Saturdays and Sundays. And that was because of the needs and the demands to keep the facility clean. It varied because of the pool versus the facility that only closed for thirty minutes during that time. At CFCC, as I was mentioning, we were also challenged with recruitment. Staff was identifying that the hourly rate was part of the problem. And so there was a proposal that was crafted, requesting that the base pay of eleven dollars be increased to thirteen, as you also heard with the lifeguard pay. The addition of the two dollars was accompanied by an incentive bonus of five hundred dollars for any of the counselors who continued to work the entire nine weeks, accumulating a total of two hundred and seventy-five hours. That was fifty-three percent of the total camp hours across the summer. Additionally, at the senior center, Shwana was leading programming while Jerry pulled in various roles. And he was in different directions at all times. Majority of the time, you could find him at Church Street Park managing cricket. At P Admin, Leslie was spearheading over twenty events herself in a one-woman operation. In athletics, Brian and Matt were working diligently to increase participation numbers after dropping to an all-time low coming out of COVID. The administrative support specialist position was being fulfilled by temp services. I was one year in as the director, where none of them served as the interim. I highlight this because transition and lack of leadership was surrounding the parks team. We were wrapping up the department's operational assessment being conducted by Barry Dunn. There were points of view that the department had developed into silos, and this was impacting communication, work efficiencies, and teamwork. I wasn't the only newly hired department head. At this time, Jeffrey Brown, the public court director, and I were in step together to improve communication, work efficiencies, and teamwork between our interdepartment staff. So now we go to this time last year. And you see a colorful org chart presented before you. We're starting to transition. There's a vision that is developing with that assistance of Barry Dunn. Barry Dunn wrote out their analysis report on October eighteenth of 2023. So we're not quite across that year mark yet. They're quoted saying, "The search for excellence in management has positioned the Tana-Morsel to remain a strong cornerstone for success. That success will then become the strength of sound parks, recreation, and cultural resources management, and will serve as a benefit to the Morsel community." They credit the town's efforts in searching out a consulting firm to assist with the operational assessment, recognizing that there was the desire to strengthen the foundation and develop a new vision for Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Department. The assessment provided a detailed analysis of the department's organizational structure and an in-depth analysis of technical skills, job descriptions, internal processes, and organizational leadership and culture. They noted the following as the most relevant areas for meeting the outcomes set forth from their organization. Review and analyze the organizational structure, staffing levels, and workload. Compare the department to similar agencies in North Carolina. Identify and review internal and external communication methods. Identify best practices of the parks and recreation industry. Recommend effective streamlining procedures and processes. They proposed two different organizational structures. One, where there were two branches of the department stemming from a superintendent over facilities and a superintendent over programming. The second was an expansion to the above framework to include a third superintendent with the areas of responsibility to include facilities, community service, and aquatics and fitness. At the end of the Barry Dunn's unveiling workshop that took place in October, staff and I discussed two things. One, what did they hear that would set the department on that trajectory for success and to be different from where we were the year before? And then second, what recommendations did they have that differed from what Barry Dunn had proposed? So we had a think tank session. From there, Brendan and I only met one more time. Okay, just kidding. We were meeting all the time. And we were poring over the Barry Dunn analysis. And he was very interested in the feedback that staff had provided after the unveiling. And he had a vision, and I had a vision. And so together, we were inspired by what Barry Dunn had presented. And so together, we were inspired by what Barry Dunn had presented. But what is in place was crafted with the culmination of staff input, our vision, and that foundation from Barry Dunn, which resulted in coming before you all with a recommendation to add four full-time positions, four changes in use of existing positions, and one transfer of an existing position. And that's highlighted on the org chart. Orange of being the change in the department use of the positions, four, or excuse me, purple being the new positions, and yellow being the position that was moved and repurposed from another department. The reorganization in progress is in front of you. Through this imagery, I'm representing what has occurred since that approval on November twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-three, where you all so graciously, without a flutter of an eye or a question in place, said, "Yes, we see this. We understand. The department needs to be different." So on December twenty-third, Katie Greninger relocated to P Admin from M A F C, and her title changed from M A F C Marketing Memberships to P R C R Marketing Coordinator. At the same time, the three-quarter thirty-hour staff serving as M A F C's recreation program leaders were elevated to full forty-hour employees. Jerry Allen had announced his upcoming retirement was in the process of relocating to P Admin, and Shwana was elevated to interim senior center supervisor. Hiring and recruiting for new positions was well underway, along with interviews. There were so many times throughout this process that Bob Butler said, "Mary, have you hired all your staff? Are you still interviewing?" The majority of the time, the answer was, "Bob, it's a long journey. I'm still interviewing." So, the little bubbles on the screen. The first hired in February was Pina Cantissaria, fulfilling the newly established member service supervisor at M A F C. Second hire in March was Leslie Haney, fulfilling the newly established P R C R Special Event Supervisor position. Third hired, also in March, was Ben President, fulfilling the newly established Athletic Program Specialist position. Followed by the fourth hire, which occurred as a result of upper positioning with Pina as the member service supervisor. There was now a vacancy in the Community Center Customer Service Representative position, which was filled by Jay Shutey. Next, along the hiring continuum, the fifth was held by Billy Hilton, who had set to the newly established P R C R Operations Analyst position, also in March. On April twenty-ninth, Cindy King's first day commenced as the Assistant Director and was the sixth hire. Hires number seven and eight both occurred in May. The first with Ariel Tatta as the event specialist, and then on May thirteenth, and then fulfilling the role transferred from Comms, was Courtney Coley on the twenty-eighth, excuse me. Ariel was fulfilling the role that was transferred in from Comms, and then on May twenty-eighth, Courtney Coley accepted the role vacated by Leslie Haney with her upper mobility as the Cultural Resources Specialist. Now, that was nine positions, as I get to this last one. And it's not a coincidence. Let me give you some numerology facts. The number nine in numerology is believed to represent completeness, balance, and perfection, and is associated with the planet Mars, which is considered to be a powerful planet. According to Indian numerology, the number nine is associated with qualities such as courage, leadership, and determination. Our number ninth employee was hired on September third, Laura Crumpler, as the Senior Center Manager, rounding out this journey of where we are today. Now, as a staff of twenty-five, and as we look back, we were staff of eighteen. You all have had two years of interactions with me, and I think probably you, at some point in time, thought, "Hey, Mary's a little different, but she's a great add to our team." And so, in talking with Katie, when we were planning what our organizational chart was going to look like, I was like, "One, I do not do well with trying to do the traditional chain-of-command org chart. And with my staff, I use the symbolism of a circle." I'll get by that in a second. And so Katie has heard that, and she said, "What do you think about representing our org chart with a circle?" I was like, "I love it. Let's run with it." So before you, this non-traditional representation of our existing org chart shows that we have levels now of directors, managers, coordinators, and specialists, down to our three-quarter benefited staff, and then, of course, we stand on the shoulders of our part-time staff. Let me go back to that imagery of a circle. It's no surprise that most businesses, their structure is all the way up to the top and top to the bottom. So I use the imagery of a triangle. It has pointing edges, and it's very skinny as it gets to the top. I'm a team player, and I want all of my staff to lead with authority and feel like that they have that authenticity to lead from where they are with their roles and responsibilities. So I use the imagery of a circle that doesn't have that hard edge, that has that collective feeling that it is never-ending, that it takes all to do the work. So that's why I present to you the circle presentation, and I appreciate Katie bringing that creative perspective forward. So you may have already picked up on there's been some interchangeable titles like Senior Center Supervisor, and now it's Senior Program Manager. And then, in addition to the organizational restructuring analysis by Barry Dunn, Manager Zunima also put Parks in the pipeline for the salary study. This allowed us to jump in ahead of where our normal rotation would have been. And this study's result once again benefited Parks, with fifteen title changes and all positions receiving an increase in their salary. Not only benefiting them as a staff member, but also making us market rate competitive. The profession of Parks and Recreation is built out of hours and hours that part-time staff contribute. As I have previously mentioned, there were significant recruitment and retention challenges. Thus, another impactful event occurred back at the start of the calendar year. Brandon, Jeannie, and Dawn met with Parks Managers, Supervisors, and Coordinators to discuss the critical need to rethink the part-time hourly rate framework. Staff explained the various challenges, and senior leadership listened and heard the request to do different. What has resulted is a market rate competitive hourly framework, where the minimum paid part-time employee makes thirteen dollars per hour, and the highest receives twenty-eight in comparison to ten dollars and twenty-four dollars. Also different is the insertion of two levels. This affords hiring supervisors to vet the potential employee's previous work experience and skill set, and create an opportunity for existing staff at the entry level to advance to a higher pay level, meeting the retention criteria. This slide is framed with "Be the Change You Wish to See." I pulled on this quote early whenever I was first employed with the town. As I was hearing from staff, they just weren't sure. Where was the direction coming from? Was it coming from you all? Was it coming from senior leadership? They had experienced turnover with the director's position. There were layers of supervisors. There were call centers. And as you know, with local government, we're not all underneath one roof. And so then it felt like there wasn't this leadership guiding them in one singular direction, and they felt like their voice was being lost. So I used Gandhi's quote to say, "Be the change you wish to see in the town of Morseville. Tell your story. Shout your story. Say all those great benefits of what you experience every single day by providing the service of recreation and leisure, trips, activities, et cetera, to our patrons and to the community." So this slide represents a journey that the team is on. We've talked about some of these benchmarks along the way. Before I pick up on number one, I do want to highlight the staff. As collectively, I had them stand and introduce them to you now as we go through the slides. Their pictures represent their heart, their compassion for what they do day in and day out. So Cindy King, Assistant Director, Billy Hilton, Analyst, Christina Fisher, our Senior Administrative Assistant, and Katie Greninger, our Marketing Coordinator. Collectively, the five of us have over sixty-five years of experience in recreation. The first benchmark on our journey here of how we've gotten to where we are starts with Barry Dunn. I've gone into great detail about that, so I don't continue. The next one is the interdepartment communications. Parks, like you've heard from the other department heads, touch all the departments. Some more than other in terms of frequency, especially with our special event permitting process. That touches planning, inspections, P D, fire, Public Works, pretty regularly. But I do want to highlight Public Works, and that's their brand and logo. It's kind of hard to read from where we are. Because once upon a time, there was a little bit of a gray cloud between the two departments. And as I had already mentioned, with Jeffrey being new, and I was new, we were in step together to dissolve and do different, and to enhance communication, enhance those appreciation for what each other do, because we can't do one without the other. The two sides of the house is, one is maintenance, is one is operations. And you have to have both in order to carry out, whether it's cricket, or whether it's basketball, whatever it is, we are in step with one another to provide that service. So I cannot say enough great things about the public works staff here in Morseville. I've worked previously in two other jurisdictions, and head and shoulders above them, in their courtesy, in their follow-through, in their knowledge. And that goes a long way. When a traditional makeup of Parks and Recreation is athletic maintenance is in-house. Although several years ago, there was a decision to have the athletic maintenance within Public Works, and it works, because there's skill sets and resources within Public Works that aligns with that athletic maintenance framework. And then for us in Parks, there's that framework that aligns with the operations. So, for me, I want to give a special shout-out to the public work staff, who are hard workers striving to answer the call, to provide support, be it with a special event, or assisting with breaking down and assembling new office furniture. Where we intersect daily is with athletics programming and with athletics facility maintenance. Talk about transformative. The staff on both sides of the house are head and shoulders above where they have been. And for this, I extend my gratitude to Jeffrey, Stephen, Kevin, Lance, Qua, Josh, Jeff, Ben, Cameron, Peter, Joe, Dawn, and Dylan, and to Brian, Matt, and Ben. But I want to circle back. This is where I might get a little weepy. To the relationship that's been in the making for almost ten years. And that is with Brian and Kevin. For these two, there isn't enough time for me to be able to put into words what I have seen and what you get to experience, that it exemplifies the efforts that they put in for their communication, for their work efficiencies, and for their teamwork. But we have all experienced it as we look back over this cricket season. And it's just not the cricket operations, and it extends far beyond that. So with a grateful heart, I extend deep gratitude to Kevin and Brian. Okay. As we continue to the third stop, intra-department communications was also needing some extra efforts. I had the opportunity to work with a professional coach, and one of her first tools that she used was Tilt Three-Sixty-Five. And that's an assessment similar to a Myers-Briggs or a psychogeometrics, and I have had numerous experience with those in the past. But after I got the results and the analysis from the Tilt assessment, it blew me away. I started researching and digging, and I wanted this for my staff. It was a different approach that helped you see, you come with your differences, and differences make a difference, but you also recognize that you need to tilt and lean in to where others have strengths. So staff went through this assessment early on in two thousand and twenty-four, and all of the new staff who have joined us will have this opportunity as we're crossing the finish line with hiring one of our aquatic staff. Our stop at number four is accreditation. I will speak more about CAPRA on slide twenty-four, and I don't mean to put you asleep, but yes, there's twenty-four slides, so bear with me. Number five, stop along the line, is personnel programming in ActiveNet. Again, these are pillars of how our staff operates and functions with ActiveNet being our registration platform and software. And I'll touch on this, it integrates in some of the other slides, but if you have specific questions, I'll be happy to answer those at the end. Six, with Cricket, really is starting to shape our department and set a reputation in our community and beyond. And stay tuned, I'll return to this topic on slide ten. Stop number seven, looking ahead or what is next? Again, going back to whenever I call it speed dating with Martha and Brandon, and they were looking at me, and they said, "You know, we're just not sure where we want to go with this department. We feel like the best step for us to take is to go this interim route. Along the way, we're going to have discussions about resources and tools, because we are committed to getting Parks and Rec where they need to be." And so part of that was to have the opportunity to do a reset for our mission, vision, and values. And so that's coming in February of two thousand and twenty-five. And that, too, will help us grow as a department and unlock other untapped efficiencies that we may not realize, or will also help us stand behind that tagline and connect this to values. I believe it was one of you that was speaking during Engineering's departmental presentation that keyed into happiness. And so I'm excited to learn what our values are going to be and how we live them out every day. Before I advance to the next slide, I would like to recognize the team members, as I have said one more time, Cindy, Christina, Billy, Katie, and myself. This next slide is in Katie's wheelhouse. It's our digital enhancements. I'm extremely proud of the program guide, and I hope that you all are, too. The program guide has truly been transformed. It used to be a static PDF handout, and it has been elevated to a glossy cardstock, twenty-page professionally-produced booklet and e-program guide. The flip book version made its inaugural debut in August of last year, and to date, there have been almost ten thousand visits to the website where the program guide lives. The department is successful across two social media platforms, Facebook with almost six thousand followers, and Instagram, who's newer to the team, of seven hundred and seventy-seven followers. I would like to spotlight the efforts, like I said, of the creation of the program guide and Instagram to Katie Greniger, our Marketing Coordinator. And she loves to use the term "curate." She truly has curated and crafted our services and our programming in print media and in digital media. She does this through the graphic representation, whether it's the videos or it's posts. And all platforms are not created equally. They have different audience. Facebook trends to a mature audience, where in contrast, Instagram trends with a younger audience. Katie went live with our account in January, and little did she know, but two other local municipalities were also crafting and curating their first Instagram accounts. Going live with the Parks and Rec Instagram account, it will not surprise you, because Morseville is leading the way with engagement. In comparisons, one platform created two months prior to Morseville has just over three hundred followers, and the other created also in step in January is lagging behind us with six hundred followers. As we continue to see how our department is growing and blossoming, I introduce to you the Athletics Department, led by Athletics Program Manager Brian Ray, coordinated with Athletics Program Specialist Ben President, and the second Athletic Program Specialist Matt Morris. Collectively, they have thirty-two years of experience in recreation. You can see on the slide that I highlight their programs, that the department offers Athletics to Go. This confuses some of our members that are participants that have not participated in it, that Athletics to Go showcases the sport. So if someone is on the fence, this is a great entree into how to learn this sport, and then to give them the opportunity to go into the sport with fresh eyes and maybe a little less intimidation. It also gives the athletic staff the flexibility to introduce new sports, so that we can test drive where the interest is. I offer to you to continue highlighting baseball, basketball, volleyball, and cricket. And as I said, I'm going to go deeper into cricket. It wasn't too long ago that y'all applauded and had a photo op with our Little League baseball group. I just want to again iterate that we have four leagues, that is across T-ball, or excuse me, that includes T-ball, coach pitch, ten U, and twelve U. In basketball, we have nine leagues. This has ebbed and flowed, but the Athletics team is extremely proud that they have these divisions. they have these divisions where it's five to six coed, seven to eight boys, seven to eight girls. So they're not having to play together. They have their own group that they're playing amongst themselves. Boys, nine, 10, girls, nine, 10, boys, 11, 12, girls, 11, 12 and juniors and corporate. And oftentimes in sports around age 13, there's different competing interests. So that conveys why our leagues stop at age 12. We have capacity to offer up to older ages. It's just that it typically the interest falls off unfortunately. I'm not going to read to you the others, but I highlight volleyball and we're getting ready to talk more in depth about how our numbers have trended with participation. This slide is very encouraging and very telling as the data is represented across the fiscal years, you see an upper trend across the three sports. And I would like to read the quote to you. Congratulations to Matthew Morris, Brian Ray and the entire athletics team on a successful Little League spring season. We see growth in the program over the three years we have been playing. It was great to see additional teams being added and various age groups to allow for more competition between the teams. And that was from one of our participants' mothers. And so that really, um, sums up the effort that the staff puts in with all their special touches to make sure and ensure that that experience for those development athletes is a fun and exciting one. Staff also credits Katie with her creativity and curation of pushing out unique and different, um, social media graphics and posts that they know that that has helped push information out in a different format than what it has been previously. There's been some engaging, um, videos so that the, the viewer can get the feel of, wow, I'm going to have somebody who's excited, who's ready to help my child develop in this sport. So I hope that those, um, numbers will continue to grow. We do have some pain points. We will, um, hit a ceiling at some point in time because we have facility capacity issues. As you know, we're 10 square miles and as Brandon says, they're not, um, producing any more land. So we have to think differently and creatively about how to share that, um, Cedar Fork Community Gym with volleyball, with basketball, potentially with, um, in-house dryland for sports whenever there's inclement weather. Would it be ideal to have multiple in, indoor spaces with multiple gym space? Absolutely. But the staff is very creative and they're thinking differently. As you may or may not know, we rent space, um, at Davis Drive Middle School. And there's, um, opportunities that the staff has also expanded to grow the sport of basketball by reaching out to Raleigh to see how their, um, leagues can enhance with our leagues so that the numbers can be up and we can have that cross-play. We have arrived at slide 10 where I highlight cricket through an infographic. As I mentioned back on slide six, that we would come quickly to cricket and here we are. So let me draw your attention to the table in the lower right corner where it says CSP usage. I'm going to walk you through the various categories of the cricket groups that play at Church Street. So we have international play. We did not have that in 2023. We had this, that this year with Sri Lanka coming. As you're very well aware of, we have our 10-year agreement with ACE. And with that 10-year agreement, that presents opportunity for major league and minor league play. This year it increased over last year with two additional match days. Let me also point out that the BC is batting cage or practice pitches. And that's different from in the past. As you know, the Southern Lot, that's one of the new amenities and very desirable, um, not only for these classification of leagues, but also for our, our local leagues. Again, we haven't opened that up fully to the community because we are still under construction. At the time of going to publication, it was planned for minor league to have 12 matches. However, Mother Nature has thought differently and we have had to have cancellations. And so that number was actually just three. And then I put asterisks down next to the local league play because it's impacted by what occurs with the major and minor league dates. The agreement says that there's 20 weeks first right of refusal within that umbrella. And so then TCL is waiting to see what we have left over. And Brian is a magician of crafting the schedule and TCL is so, um, outpatient as we are constantly having variability within our schedule. So although that says that there's nine local league plays, that's been reduced again because of, um, weather. And then we get this question a lot, um, what is the cricket season? So that cricket season, as, um, last night we discussed in our advisory committee, worldwide, it follows the sun. But in North Carolina, we have a different climate. We can't follow the sun 365 days out of the year. So our cricket season, we, again, Mother Nature comes into play, but from May to October. The other, um, stats on here that I want to highlight is the number of days of practice, church or practice or matches at Church Street Park with 146, at Shallow Park, 216 and at Crabtree, 265. And special, um, call out the Shallow and Crabtree, um, nature park is that that is where our local play takes place. TCL Core, CDA, and that has grown over the years where TCL for years and years and years was the only cricket developmental sports organization. And now it's grown and there's been other iterations to where we have Core and we have CDA. And again, we don't have all the cricket, um, practicing amenities across town. And so Brian is a curator of figuring out how to best give the teams practice and field and match play. So he is a, um, as I like to call him, he's a cricket tournament director with a lot of, um, tools up his sleeve. All right. And then the 400-plus hours for staff that was just at Church Street Park alone from the beginning of the summer until now. Our next slide, we move to Cedar Fork Community Center where I highlight, um, Quentin Jones as a community center manager, Jason Lee as a youth program specialist, Keishana Williams also as a youth program specialist. You all are probably very familiar with summer camp. There's also throughout the school year before school and after school. And then there is our, um, emerging beginning little ones that participate in ready, set, go. Then there's other, um, programming that takes place. It's through contractual agreements, archery, Bollywood dance, guitar, et cetera. And CFCC has been like a best kept secret and now the cat's going to be out of the bag. There's getting lots more attention for the facility rental. You can see there, um, staff ratios go hand in hand with, uh, doing youth programming to make sure that there's the supervision that's warranted for the age group that's being, um, receiving the programming. Here we go to the, the data and I would like to read the quote for you here also from one of our parents. When I see CFC staff, they regularly ask how my kids are doing at town events. They chat with our children like old friends, which reassures me that we're all doing something right. My youngest referenced a specific counselor by name multiple times during his last week at camp and each time it was positive. He described him as nice, friendly and someone who played games with kids and helped everyone. Not only did Camp Cedar Fork make an impact, but that counselor has made a lasting impression. Again, character building. It's the, um, indirect outcomes that are being facilitated by staff and so telling in that quote. Now, a little bit different with our trends here with our data. So you may be going, well, what's going on? I thought everything was going to be like sunshine, uniforms, unicorns and confetti and every slide was going to be trending up. 2024 looks different than 22 and 23. And I highlight that there's variability and interest when it comes to a parent making the decision of where their child's going to go for after-school care. It also is a variable that comes into play if the kids have been in our program and they start to age up. Because after school, the appeal is for the Cedar Fork, um, elementary students that goes to fifth grade. However, we open our doors for those outside as well. And then with summer camp, the variability there from the, uh, 22 and 23 and what was different with 24 is we were a 10-week camp and we have reduced that to nine. So we have a slight margin increase, um, from the 23 over 24. We have, um, earlier in this presentation, I discussed where we were having challenges with recruiting staff. And so the capacity week over week was also less in those earlier fiscal years. However, the data is presented looking across all weeks for the total touch points, number of days that the campers were enrolled. So that gives it an edge of being higher where the consistency was occurring with those participants and those trends. Katie is working with that staff as well to promote the program offerings. It's highlighted in our program guides. And so myself and Cindy are working very closely with the youth programming staff to offer additional programming so that the center can be viewed like as a teen center or a teen hangout. So teen dances, teen activities. In our parks profession as a whole, teens are oftentimes an area where it's untapped and underserved. Again, competing interest, cars, football games, other activities, friends, social hangout, et cetera. So, um, more's to come and looking to the future with our youth programming numbers increasing. Next, uh, we roll into the Mooresville Aquatic and Fitness Center and specifically again, highlighting the staff. Kendall Smith as our community center manager. And then with our next pitcher, Josh Wirick, our community center customer service representative and Pina Cantosaria, the member service supervisor, Sarah Smith as the fitness program coordinator, PJ Nettisham as aquatics manager and Pippin as aquatic specialist and Casey Martin, senior aquatics coordinator over the lifeguard training. Collectively, they have 69 years of experience in recreation. And I would like to highlight special to Kendall and PJ who have been, um, employed with the town for 17 years. So that's important to, um, recognize that this staff is to be commended for work in holidays through inclement weather and for their 90 hours of operation weekly year-round. So very different from our other facilities. As you know, they open before the sun rises and they close after the sun sets. Unique to MAFC this year, there was a striping of a pickleball court, the mural installment, and we're enhancing to a new registration software called UPACE. And I'll continue to talk about UPACE on another slide. Looking here at the data, it trends in that positive direction showing that the fiscal year of 24, uh, well far exceeded the other years. I would like to read this quote and it's from a Google review. Google, um, is another benefit for social marketing or, um, a marketing platform that is electronic and web-based and itself regulates as long as people are going and doing reviews. And you may know this or you may not, but it takes 500 reviews to get the analytics behind it driving to that facility. So this quote right here says, "It's one of the best fitness and aquatic centers I've ever visited. The pools are amazing with dedicated kids, with a dedicated pool for the kids and the lap pool. The charges are decent and worth it. The shower rooms are always clean and tidy. The staff is warm and friendly. I love going to swim here. I've made many friends within the community thanks to this place." So something that, um, Katie and I have been talking about with a marketing tool utilizing that Google analytic and that Google, um, driver is to potentially look at putting up little signs around MAFC that says, "If you can't give us a five-star review, tell us why? How can we improve to meet your needs?" On the fitness side of the house of MAFC, there's been this growing trend of staying current with fitness. Right now, we've talked about pickleball. A couple of years ago, we were talking about Zumba. There's always emerging new facets of fitness and I credit, um, Sarah Smith was staying on that cutting edge with support from Kendall Smith. And the quote here reads, "The fitness center has a wide range of equipment from cardio machines to weights and everything is in excellent condition. I also appreciate the variety of fitness classes offered which cater to all fitness levels. The atmosphere at the Mooresville Aquatic and Fitness Center is very welcoming. Whether you're a beginner or a fitness enthusiast, you will feel comfortable here." And that was a five-star Google review. I hope that you've had the experience with signup genius. However, I would like to apologize for your experience with signup genius. It is difficult. It is clunky. It is cumbersome, but it has, um, it's days are numbered. It's getting out of here and we are advancing to UPACE. It has lots more bells and whistles where there will be no longer a week and five minutes to register for a class. Registration will open. They'll have the tailored steel entry of residents and members and the non-residents. There'll be wait lists. There'll be visual representation through an app that you can use. So there's so many enhancements. And so Sarah Smith leading this charge, extreme gratitude. However, I know she's probably like, "It can't get here fast enough." Sign-up genius, um, there are explicit words that cannot be said that really describe its inefficiencies. All right, let's move on and dive into learning a little more about our guardians of water. The team is comprised of the aquatics manager. PJ, as I mentioned, has 17 years with the town, two senior aquatic coordinators. Casey Martin leads the lifeguarding leg or the lifeguarding side of the house. And we are actively recruiting for a new team member to lead the side of the house with swim lessons. And then both provide that vigilance and leadership and mentoring where Casey is focused with the aquatic specialists comprised of one full-time employee, three, three-quarter, 30-hour staff. And then these two legs round out with the 45 part-time staff, eight of which are swim lesson instructors. And that new hire will be the coordinator over the swim lesson instructors. Earlier on a previous slide, I mentioned about the percent, um, that the program pool and the spray, spray ground was open. PJ and Casey have worked diligently since they no longer have to sit in the stand and they have a full roster of lifeguards. And it all ties back to that listening session with staff, um, years ago to get the lifeguard incentive plan, pay plan in place. But then more importantly, this year with Brandon, Jeannie and Dawn hearing that need of elevating the hourly rate for the lifeguards. And so now that we're fully staffed, the program pool has increased its hours of operation by 5% and the spray ground has increased its hours of operation by 10%. Also new and different, if you haven't been in the while, is that the pool is only closing for cleaning three days a week. And then the overall facility isn't closing at all. So I know that's very well received and has been long time waiting. Again, that was in place, um, because of COVID, but staff recognize there's a lot to clean under this roof and let's take this opportunity so that we can have, um, the amenities ready for the expectations of who we're serving. Moving on along across town to our Mooresville Senior Center, Senior Center. Again, I'd like to recognize the staff as you heard me say that we have our newest team member, Laura Crumpler, who's our senior center manager. And then Shawna Scott, our senior adult program specialist. Together, they have 39 years of experience in recreation. And the senior center is involved in, into bucketing their services. This is going to be presented up here in front of you with educational classes, fitness classes, game time, trips, socials and others. You can see that there's a, a menu that spans across each of those six buckets, but I would like to highlight our low-impact cardio interval, our line dancing and bingo, these classes are far exceeding capacity. And if you go anywhere within five feet of the door, you're going to hear the senior centers want a standalone facility. I know that's a surprise, right? You've all heard it, um, 10 times over. The staff here are creative. They're looking for unique ways to do programming differently. At the senior advisory committee board meeting in September, one of our public was there asking and just inquiring about activities and then also, um, providing positive feedback about ActiveNet. And he was shocked to hear Cindy King say, "Trust me, we can do a cooking class in here." Because his vision is you need a full-fledged commercial kitchen, but that's not the case. And so we look forward to be able to prove him wrong and hopefully have a, a cooking class in the near future or adding a Or adding an additional line dancing class to be able to enhance the programming that the seniors are desiring, but showing them how it can work and thinking creatively about our space. Other activities that are growing is our game time, bridge, dominoes. This is a social time for our seniors and they thrive in that opportunity to be together, to have a similar situation that they're not having to look at, is there any sort of restrictions that's holding them back? Are they being compared to the younger generation next to them? They are with their people and they love it. And so they, this is going to be felt and heard in the quotes that are coming on the next slide. Again, representing the data to you, but I want to kick it off with this quote. As I was opening up that door, "The Mooresville Senior Center means fellowship, fun, and good health." And you can see here, we're trending in the upper mobility across educational classes, trips. Socials dipped last year. They were fiscal year twenty-three. They were high in FY twenty-two. They've come back up in FY twenty-four. Just know, in general, across all the divisions of the department, is programming enhancement is a number-one priority, that we have opportunity to think differently about our spaces and continue to grow. This page represents our fitness and games data. And I'd like to open up with a quote. "The Mooresville Senior Center is my go-to for exercise and fun since I've retired. Chair yoga, floor yoga, low-impact cardio classes, and line dancing are all classes I've attended. And I have met a lot of seniors who are like-minded. When we even have Tai Chi classes for a while. There are also activities to attend like ice cream socials, teas, and various trips which I have attended. It's a fun and engaging center in our wonderful town." Rolling into our special events and cultural resources, introducing our staff. Leslie Haney, our special event supervisor. Courtney Coley, our cultural resource specialist. And Ariel Chaka, our event specialist. Collectively, they have twenty-five years of experience in recreation. And you've experienced this, there's new looks, new names. And then there's enhancements with our cultural resources activities. So just a few to spotlight. The new look, new names coming up is Boobash. That's one of the events that was previously in comms that will now, it's under the purview of the Parks Department. So there's new branding that's being pushed out over our social networks and our banners and our print media. And then the event structure is going to be different, taking place outside of the trail, but being inspired by that success of the trail to where there's going to be organizations decorating their booth with interactive activities and handing out candy. There's going to be a costume parade. There's a town staff pumpkin decorating and carving competition. So we're, you know, town staff are never competitive, right? So that is going to be new and an enhancement for this year and I'm really looking forward to it. Cultural resources, you have seen some new branding previously with Holy. And then with Juneteenth and relocating where we hosted Juneteenth. And then, of course, we've enhanced our music in the park celebrates Pride. We just came off the heels of the International Festival and thank you all for your kind sentiment at the meeting on Tuesday. And then up next is Diwali. So make sure that is on your calendar. As I advance the next slide, I break out how we celebrate together, how we enrich our community. Special Events and Cultural Resources Program, when it convenes, it's creating a placemaking. It's connected with economic development. So I know they're small, but I did want to highlight that there are offerings from March through December. Now, as we're looking ahead and getting prepared for Town Center, staff and I are in conversations about what does it look like if we do two events a month? We have room to think differently. Again, that's a common thread as I have said that on some of our slides. You also heard me say, "Enhance programming." So the events team is no different than our youth programming team or aquatics or athletics team. They too are asked to think creatively and what else is missing that can come to our lineup. So the two-year comparison, there's not a lot of differences other than the staff grew. So again, you all know that in years prior, Leslie ran from one event to the other. Maybe not physically, but in her head, she was always spinning from the event that she was working on and the event coming up. Now that she has the two staff, it affords her the opportunity to pace a lot differently than where she was a year ago. She even told me earlier last week, you know, it's great having the two staff members with Ariel and Courtney as we've melded together in this short amount of time. I don't feel the stress and the pressure that I did last year. Even with thinking, what is the weather going to be? Because last year we had to cancel International Festival. That she was ready to take that on differently than what she had experienced in the past. And then I was late arriving to the event on Saturday. But whenever I met her, she said, "Whew, I just got around to everybody handing out water and this is great. Look at the crowd." Sure, there's some things that we could have done differently. Then I approached Courtney. I was like, "Courtney, how are things going?" She's like, "This is my best favorite event." And I was like, "Wow, that is telling right there." And then Ariel was support staff and around talking with PD and providing support and information. And for me to step back and see where that team has gelled in such a short amount of time, they have really picked up where Leslie has her fingertips and her fingerprints on those events. So I applaud them in that short amount of time coming together. And so down in the circles there, that gives you an infographic of what goes on with the logistical planning. And this doesn't even really give the benefit of that timeline because event planning overlaps depending on when the event is occurring. But there's the planning, there's the marketing, there's the working with the other departments to make sure there's the coordination of all the right ingredients to make sure the event is going to go off without a hitch, whether it's with Public Works and talking about maintenance needs or if it's public safety with the tactical support behind the scenes. The event happens and guess what? It is not in there. Then there's an after-action meeting that occurs. And so for International Festival, that occurred for us yesterday where the staff are asked, collectively, the team is asked, "What worked? What didn't work? What can we do differently next year?" And Courtney put a little twist on that this year and she was saying, "How can we grow? What do we need to stop? Where can we do different?" And so she gets a lot of great feedback, as does Ariel and Courtney, so that it's never stagnant. It's never the same. There's always this visioning of what can we do different? I've shared with senior leadership that in my experience as an event supervisor, an event takes three years to really be able to tell what that event's life is going to take on. That first year, you've planned, your creativity is coming to fruition, but you're expecting the unexpected. There's going to be hiccups, there's going to be setbacks. And so then you're learning, you're growing, to use Courtney's word, for the next year. And there's some things that may need to be a stop and to think differently. So year two, you're trying a few different new things. Or maybe you're enhancing some of the vendor numbers. Maybe you had thirty the year before, you enhance that by twenty-five percent. Then by that third year, the wheels are underneath that event. It's on track and it is moving forward. So you're not having to constantly think, what does this event need to be a signature event? Or what does it need to be a destination? It has grown and blossomed into that event over the course of those three years. Then you get to continue to look and see, okay, does this event have a life cycle? And is it cycling in a short term? Or is it kind of duration that we can carry it forward? And then our one event that I really want to highlight, whenever I'm talking about a signature event that's ours, it's Mooresville's and that is Mooresville. And staff is so excited about that opportunity to really continue to show what a signature event looks like for Mooresville. And then the unrealized of what's to come. All right, at this time, we're going to pause and let me take a breath. And we're going to view our video presentation. But I'm not done.
The Mooresville Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Department is made up of several divisions, each dedicated to bringing our community together, promoting wellness and inspiring play throughout the town of Mooresville. Our team members do more than just create recreational opportunities. They provide the spaces, programs, and events that help us stay connected and live well.
Mooresville's parks and greenways offer a chance to pause, to breathe, and to escape the rush of daily life. Whether you're meeting a neighbor at the playground or taking a break from work to walk the greenway, these spaces are vital to our well-being and the heart of our community. Parks and greenways increase property value, reduce healthcare costs, and attract businesses to the area. They're not just for recreation. They're for reconnecting with nature, with the people around you, and with yourself.
Mooresville Athletics is more than just a sports program. It's often a first-time experience for many of our youth. Our staff serves as mentors, friends, and coaches instilling values of sportsmanship, dedication, teamwork, and healthy habits. Research shows that structured youth recreation is linked to higher self-esteem, better academic performance, and personal growth. This year alone, we positively impacted over twelve hundred kids. Sports has a unique power to unite people across all cultures and backgrounds, a universal language that brings us together.
We do more than recreate, we create healthy mindsets.
Cedar Fort Community Center is a vital part of many children's lives. A place where they feel safe, valued, and free to be themselves. Our dedicated staff creates unforgettable experiences through learning, friendship, and play in a judgment-free environment. Once a parent comes in to sign their child-up program, we got them from here on out. Cedar Fort isn't just a community center, it's a gateway to new adventures, personal growth, and transformative moments that shape young lives forever. We do more than recreate, we create unforgettable experiences.
At the Mooresville Aquatic and Fitness Center, we are a vibrant community hub for health and wellness. Our unique facility brings people of all ages together, fostering physical and emotional growth. Whether it's a toddler taking their first swim lesson or a senior finding new ways to stay active and engaged, we're dedicated to supporting every stage of life. Our committed staff goes above and beyond from opening our doors at five-thirty a.m. to staying current with safety certifications, ensuring an exceptional experience for everyone who walks through our doors. We do more than recreate, we create wellness.
Special events give a community its unique identity, celebrating the people, culture, and spirit that make Mooresville truly special. With over twenty events annually, we offer countless opportunities for residents to connect, engage, and thrive. From vibrant celebrations like Holy and Juneteenth to the patriotic red, white, and boom, our diverse lineup showcases the richness of our community. In events, we do more than recreate, we create community.
The Mooresville Senior Center is a small community in a small facility. Seniors come in, they know each other, and they help one another. Seniors may be older and wiser, but they like to come in here and have a good time. The community here is intimate. Seniors hang out after classes and talk. Our staff here also plays a unique role, many of them being seniors themselves. It is seniors helping seniors. At the Senior Center, we do more than recreate, we create connection.
I'll be sure to get to a good side. All right, one, two, three.
So next up is communications for their departmental presentation. I would like to extend gratitude to Will and his staff and especially to Ross for helping to hear that creative vision from Katie and from myself and for putting this video presentation together through sickness and time crunch and deadlines. As you have mentioned, you recognize there's a lot more work that goes in behind the scenes than just a three-minute produced video. So thank you. So like seeing a performance, we have completed intermission and act one. And act two, I promise, I'm going to try to wrap it up and not extend to an hour. As I know you have some questions that you would like to also have the opportunity to have the spotlight. So as we continue forward, this is where you're going to start to see some similarities between the previous department head presentations and then with our presentations. So on this slide are the influences, the three Ps, policy, procedures, and practice. As you can imagine, with having that short turnover with directors in a two-year stand, policy, procedures, it's gotten lost in translation. So now Cindy and I, along with the staff, are crafting to bring us back structurally so that we can all pace in the same direction and our practice will be supported by our procedures. We're influenced by the benefits that are expected by our participants, that we are to provide passive and active opportunities, produce outcomes that impact health and wellness, and connect to nature and socialization, that there's an influence of what and how our impact is felt through accessibility, through inclusion, what the community's desires are, through economic impacts, environmental, and health. You've heard me mention it, it's no surprise that the influence is our space limitations. We're ten square miles. Staff is maximizing the existing and previous surfaces of our ten square miles of our facilities. We also have Wake County parameters that we have to follow, RTP parameters. And then with RDU and the FAA, as we're looking and exploring opportunities to enhance lighting at the cricket field. The final vision, or excuse me, the final influence is vision and looking ahead. In all of our departments, but especially with Parks and Recreation, we cannot get saturated. We cannot get complacent. We have to be above the curve and we have to understand and have our fingers on the pulse. So how we do that is being in an accredited department, following those parameters that are set out by the vision of how to execute as a accredited department through our capital projects, that we're hearing and meeting the needs of the communities, that we're not letting our facilities stay stagnant, that we're looking at, how do we enhance what we currently have? That we don't have to always add new, but when we have the opportunity to add new, whether it's Town Center or Dog Park, that we seize those opportunities and we connect with what those needs are from the community. And all of this stems out of a master plan. So here's a peep to FY twenty-six. You'll hear a request for funding for a refresh or, I shouldn't say a refresh, a total master plan. The last one was in twenty-eighteen. Our department looks and feels differently. Our facilities and our amenities have advanced differently from where they were in twenty-eighteen. And that guides where we go with looking at our programming, with looking at our amenities, with looking at our facilities. Of course, there's a visioning with staff and needs. As I had mentioned, we have grown from eighteen to twenty-five in a year and looking forward to Town Center, looking at developing and growing new programming. We can't be complacent with our staff structure either. So that's no surprise, y'all are very well aware of that. We have to stay competitive. And then, of course, visioning and looking forward to Town Center and looking to bring parks closer to this campus. Current initiatives, as I had mentioned previously, that I wanted to dive a little bit deeper into CAPRA. So this is a slide that I want to take that opportunity. We have an extension on our reaccreditation. It is every five years, but with where we were last year, the transitioning, there was just, realistically, we were not able to meet the demands of going through the reaccreditation. So we got an extension. Little did I know, you know, there's that saying, "Be careful what you ask for. You don't know what you're going to return." Little did I know that CAPRA was going through an evaluation of the standards, which currently there are a hundred and fifty-four. And they were evaluating to reduce that to eighty-six. But that reduction sounds great, but each of those standards have beefed up in what the evidence of compliance for each one requires. So little did I know, but we're beta testing the new accreditation framework. So, you know, trial by fire, why not just reset and refresh? So again, Billy Hilton, who joined us as our analyst, he didn't know what he was getting into beyond reading the job descriptions which outlines, he's our CAPRA accreditation administrator. He's our ActiveNet administrator. And he's our cost analysis guru. But right now, ninety percent of his focus is to get us across the finish line with CAPRA. We have looming deadlines coming at the first of the year. So hopefully you'll hear some updates on that as we're taking that across the finish line. I've sprinkled in our recreation platform, our registration, ActiveNet. ActiveNet was introduced to me in probably two thousand and twelve, somewhere in the ActiveNet was introduced to me in probably 2012, somewhere in there. And where this registration software benefits the department is we got to move from cash and checks to cards. We also got to move to online registration. But as subject matter experts with programming and activities and all things sports and fitness-related, oftentimes that platform infrastructure framework, we're not experts on. And so, learning an operating system, you all have probably gone through this at work, it oftentimes takes a year or more for it to be built out in becoming a second nature to a staff person. Well, when you add in turnover with your staff, and that's your major registration platform, that learning has constantly been turning over and taking place. So with Billy now leading that charge as the administrator, we're hoping to right-size and level-set that there's a constant individual within the department who's our go-to administrator, and then the conduit for asking questions. Now, that's not fair to Billy because he didn't walk into this position being the expert with ActiveNet, but he is a quick learner, he likes to learn independently, and thrives on being self-taught. And so, ActiveNet is right up his alley to give him that opportunity as it parallels, but takes a backseat to CAPRA. You all heard a presentation not too long ago about cost analysis, you know that there's more forthcoming. You've heard me talk about the program guide. That continues to be an initiative, enhancing programming, enhancing our social media so that we can continue to market and enhance participation through those platforms. Our staff development, as I has touched on, streamlining the registration process. As always, an importance is to give the residents an opportunity and advantage ahead of the non-residents. And different than what we've had in the past is Cindy brought to us the opportunity to open up registration at the time that the program guide goes out. And so instead of having tailored-in registration dates, the registrations for all the programs open up whenever the program guide goes out. So some parents are on top of it, and they register as they see the programming's coming online. Some other parents are more like me, and they're not sure when that deadline is. So there's not a deadline, but you got to be mindful that you're not missing that opportunity if the program has filled up. So that's a benefit now. Again, different is that the residents have that lead time over non-residents. So that is a Parks and Rec model, is that residents have an advantage over non-residents. Unique to us is the MAFC, where we also have that membership component. So we're squeezing in non-residents, members, and then non-residents. And then I touched on Tilt 365, and I've touched on UPAY. So those are our current initiatives with others that didn't make the slide because again, I'm trying to stay within that two hours. As we advance and look at the next slide, this is looking ahead, you know, where are we going? As you heard me say, accreditation, our deadline for the reaccreditation is coming up. We're also contributing our part of being one of 10 that are beta testing. Sorry, I didn't mention that previously. And that's all across the United States. We're the only one centralized as far as the southeast. There are some that are in the northeast, inland in Alabama or Georgia, and then sprinkled all across the country. Cricket, we touched on that. Again, the programming support there is international, major, minor, and local leagues. We're looking ahead of how do we continue to meet those emerging needs with the Church Street facility, but also beyond, and looking at Shiloh, and looking at Crabtree Nature Park. I touched on the master plan on a previous slide, but getting that support to move forward for an RFP and bringing in that firm that's going to work with us and bring our visions and the community's needs to an intersection to where we can look beyond where we are today and into the future. With programming, as you're well aware of, looking at cost analysis, SWA analysis, staff development is something that I don't ever want to lose sight of. This is talking about branding, certifications, that mission, vision, values, and of course, training. The next slide is another infographic, facts and figures. 1,200 kids participate in PRCR's athletic program in each year. 400, it takes 400, or excuse me, collectively, 450 hours for the Cedar Fork community staff with their time spent with the campers each year. And I remind you, that is children under the age of 12. The number of distributed program guides, we touched on that earlier, of 4,000. We are one of 13 nationally accredited Parks and Recreation Departments in North Carolina. There are currently 37 class formats for fitness classes at MAFC. And there's 730 ActiveNet accounts created by individuals aged 55 and older. And I definitely wanted to highlight that. As you know, the squeaky wheel will get the ear. And so we did hear and put training in place to help our seniors when we were moving away from signup genius and moving them into the ActiveNet registration platform. But it was eye-opening to me that we already have this base of 730 individuals ages 55 and older. And that is the age where individuals are eligible to participate at the Senior Center. And then, this is no surprise that anybody who has helped Brandon and I and staff cut the holy powder packets that we've given out, 1,800 pounds. And I'll have to also acknowledge the butlers who were, Bob said he wouldn't do it next year without a taser. It's fun and eye-opening. I welcome y'all to join us in this upcoming holy so that you can experience what they've gotten to experience. Moving to our values in action, our first picture dedication, this highlights Matt Morris. Again, not only did he get those accolades of what he does in his role with the athletics program, but he stepped up to coach the 12U baseball team in the spring due to a lack of parent volunteers, ensuring that the players could participate. He's going on to coach the Spring '24 12U All-Star Team, or he went on to coach the All-Star Team in this past spring. And he has told me that he will continue to do that. He loves it. That night, I don't know if you caught it, but as each of the participants were coming up, he was knuckle-dabbing them. And just to see that interaction with the kids, priceless. The next value in action is integrity. Kendall, PJ, Sarah, and Pina, among others, but I highlighted them from MAFC, were integral in continuing to reach out to me and asking for that conversation with senior leadership to continue the conversation that maybe had fallen short in previous years about that need for the part-time pay increase. And then courtesy, Shawna and Laura, even in Laura's short-term, have assisted seniors, as I've mentioned. We've transitioned them to use an ActiveNet. And Laura herself even sat down recently with a senior and had a one-on-one learning session. And I imagine by this time, it is no longer one, it's probably been more than one, and probably same with Shawna as well. And then a special shout-out to Billy Hilton, who did several weeks, along with Cindy, going over to the Senior Center to do a lesson-learn, train-the-trainer on ActiveNet. And finally rounding out our values in action with innovation is Courtney with our Special Events and Cultural Resources Team. As our cultural resources specialist, she ideated and established methods for the event planning procedures. I call it the SOP, the Strategic Operating Plan. Again, not to continue to take all the time this evening, but there's just a lot that goes in behind the scenes to make an event work. And she has created a workbook that not only will work for her and the team for this year, but that will take the Special Events Team far into the future. It covers logistical planning, marketing, budgeting. It talks about that after action, so it's all in one place where it's easily accessible, whether they're there or if staff turns over, where someone can step in, pull that forward, and the event speaks to the new person through that workbook. All right. Who do you know? All right, so at the top, we have a PRCR team member who used to be a correctional officer. You can throw out a name if you want to guess. I love it. Christina Fisher, our office administrator at PE Admin. Four of our team members bought houses this summer. Remember I told you that we went through a salary study and we had some salary increases? Yeah, so some new homeowners, Leslie, Katie, Matt, and Michelle. An MAFC team member has her master's degree in civil engineering and a PE license. Any guesses of who our MAFC staff person who also once upon a time dubbed as an engineer? No, not on the aquatic side of the house. It's Sarah Smith on our fitness side of the house, and Sarah is here. Sarah, if you want to wave to everybody. Staff is like, I can't believe you're doing this in person, really. All right, a PRCR team member got married this year. Anybody have any guesses about which of our staff members got married this year? I heard it whispered, Katie, our marketing curator, got married this year. An athletics team member is a former college football player. Come on, y'all know this one. Yes, Brian. A MSC team member has a street in Durham named after them. One of our part-time staff. Effie Barber has a street named after her in Durham. A CFCC team member attended Camp Cedar Fork when they were a child and progressed up and is now full-time staff. Who is that? Raise your hand, Jason. So that is a true depiction of what we're trying to do. Instill that life experience at a young age, capture them, and show them that there's a profession waiting and welcoming for them. A PRCR team member was an extra in the movie Turning the Corn Part II. Yes. Is it because of my age? A MSC team member's family has lived in Garner for over 125 years. And that is Laura Crumpler. Her Garner roots go back prior to the 1900s when her great-grandparents moved there. Her grandfather, her grandfather, mother, uncles, and sister all graduated from Garner Senior High School. A CFCC team member attend, oh, sorry, I did that one already. A CFCC team member has a black belt in karate. And you all may or may not have crossed paths, she's one of our customer service reps, and that's Brandi. So that's really fun, and hopefully you got to see a little unique side to our staff. As we continue blazing forward, we're traversing across our greenways. You all know the benefits of our greenways, connectivity, that component that Kimberly loves, which is sustainability, lowering emissions. I'll give you this Google review if I can read it here. "Absolutely gorgeous and well-maintained trail. Peaceful and calm, a lovely gem. Trails like this make North Carolina shine. Five stars from me and my dog." And that was a Google review of Indian Creek Trailhead and Greenway. So just those highlights in the middle, lowers healthcare costs, increases property values, and attracts businesses. Our featured Morrisville greenways, all of these are maintained, but the additional ones are where the contractors have come in and they've built greenways as far as their project, and then there's future plans for that connectivity. You have to start somewhere, as you all know, to pave that way for the future connectivity. And then, our park projects. Recently completed, Morrisville Community Park, as I like to call it, and others in-house. MCP3, pickleball, or excuse me, pickleball and tennis courts in a shelter. Shiloh Park, basketball court, playground in a shelter in progress, and hopefully concluding soon, the Southern Lot at Church Street Park, and then our playground at Morrisville Community Park, if Mother Nature will ever cooperate with us, right? And then future park projects, the Dog Park, visioning for the Markham Properties. And thank you so much for your support in moving forward with the development agreement for Town Center, and then visioning and thinking what opportunities are at the Wake Tech Community College site. Guess what? We've come to the end of our presentation with all the smiling faces of the Morrisville Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Department. So we don't just recreate, we create. We bring people together, promote wellness, and inspire play. Thank you for your attentiveness, thank you to my staff. All of this is the efforts of their hard work, of their care, and their compassion. It's not tit-for-tat, right?
With that one drink of water. I give you a lot of credit.
And I shed tears. I'm dehydrated.
I made it all, I made it better.
Well, first of all, well done. And I know how difficult it must have been to just highlight some of what you do. And your staff supporting you is amazing, so give yourselves another round of applause. You are the heart of the town with the Parks Department. I mean, you touch the public every day, you see them, you hear them. And one of my first comments is about how in the world do you collect that feedback? And then how do you kind of filter that so that you can add it into what you do on a regular basis?
Sure. The majority of the programs has a participant satisfaction survey that's sent at the conclusion of the programming, whether it's swim lessons, or whether it's summer camp, or whether it's an athletic programming. You have heard that we try not to do survey fatigue, but that is critical for us staying current and staying ahead and not falling short. Then the other piece that is a resource, is evolving, is our ActiveNet registration software. That's where all that registration program information feeds into data to let us know the number of participants for each of the programs. We've had some inconsistencies across the year. However, we're doing better because we know to do better. So I'm looking forward to, again, in the future, doing a look back to where we are this year.
That's a great answer. I would, with your permission, add a little bit more. We have had like some annual surveys of parks programming that were general to our public at large.
Yep.
And we did them so often that they requested that we suspend that activity for a few years and give the public a break. So are we planning on doing some more at-large?
Yep.
Because I know with the, you know, your recertification, that's probably part of that data collection.
Yep, Billy Hilton would probably kick me if I didn't bring forward a needs assessment, is what you are describing. And that through CAPRA is expected to be on the rotation of every five years. We are out of that rotation, and so he has had an opportunity to be in front of the senior advisory committee, and then last night in front of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, to start conversations with them, that as he's combing through that feedback, he's looking to see how does this roll into bringing back that survey that casts out to the community.
Very good. And then I have one more avenue on the data collection stakeholder management questions, is we do have two citizen advisory committees, which are effectively additional layers of stakeholder information. And our Park and Recs and Cultural Advisory Committee does meet on a monthly basis. And that really is nice as it can feed in right to the council meetings when you have issues or requests for funding and so forth like that. But the senior advisory committee meets on a bimonthly basis for various reasons. But is there any thought to making that a monthly cadence so that there could be regular communication and feedback?
Great question. So remember that those advisory committees self-direct themselves, and then staff as liaison. So annually, as they're setting their meeting calendar... So annually, as they're setting their meeting calendar, it has come up about frequency of meeting. And the consensus of the group this past year was to continue to meet on that bimonthly cadence. Not to say that that will be what results in this upcoming year, but it's presented to the group and then they discuss it and they put forth their decision.
So I've heard mixed messages, just to be completely transparent. One thing that might be helpful for that annual decision-making is being very clear about roles and responsibilities of the committee and what opportunities they have to feed into programming and what that means if it was a bimonthly versus a monthly. Because I did attend the meeting where they discussed that topic in 2024. And there really wasn't a comparative statement or table that kind of gave them the pros and cons of monthly versus bimonthly. So that might provide them with more information about, you know, the cost benefit. And if they still do bimonthly, that's great. But at least to have a little bit more understanding of the value of a monthly. And I know there probably is more concern about attendance with the senior population. Sometimes we do have some health issues that come up and that's something that council could address as a body to discuss if they did go monthly, if, you know, there would be any leniency on some of the attendance because of just the population that is on the committee. I do have two other topics, but we can, I can do that during the second round? Or do you want me to keep going? Okay, great. Programming and events is another topic that I had listed. Currently, we have some spectacular events, Mooresville being my favorite, but please don't take offense if you're not managing Mooresville. But it is unique and a signature event. We gave out so many smores this year, it was incredible. And the new format was very unique as well. But we also do peeps in the park. We have the Halloween Boo Bash, I believe it's being reformatted and the fireworks in July. A lot of those programs are free to the public and that public is Mooresville Kerry, Mooresville Kerry Apex. Yeah, whoever decides to show up, we provide an amenity, a smore, some giveaways and so forth like that. But when it comes to the senior center and we have some events, we charge fees. So this is not to be, you know, discussed in detail at this point, but I really think we need to be mindful that we're giving away certain things at these large public events. And then when it comes to our own senior center, we're charging them $5, $10. Is this consistent treatment for senior centers? Why are we charging our seniors when we're giving away other events, you know, things for free?
Right.
So.
And just if I may, that's an apple to a pineapple because that is a community event. If we were level setting, we would look at the fee for the program at the senior center to a fee of programming at CFCC or to MAFC. And so that will be built in into our conversations whenever I come back before y'all about cost analysis. But I understand your gist is for staff just to do market comparisons and understand what other communities are doing and recognize that our seniors are looking for programming, but they're on a limited income and being mindful of that.
Exactly. Thank you. So I look forward to the cost recovery discussion in the future. I put that down as well. And then the last item I have is we seem to be rapidly approaching a five-year mark for the senior center. And I believe there is a five-year lease for the space that we have next to the Harris Teeter in that complex. I would like to see if we could start looking at potential new spaces at the same time, understanding what the market rate or what the renewal rate would be for our senior center. We did miss an opportunity to expand, not, you know, within our own control, but the tutoring center adjacent to the senior center would have been a natural expansion with the capacity constraints on the fitness classes and some of the other events. A larger space would be nice, but just exploring options would be really great and not just looking at renewal alone is what I ask.
So I do want to iterate or reiterate that staff paces steps ahead of what is actually being presented. At the senior advisory committee board meeting in September, I shared with them that they've been heard, that I totally get it, as does Cindy, as does Laura in her short term and Wishwana, that the ideal is to have a standalone facility. And I totally understand about the five-year lease and that approach and deadline. Can't reveal all of our visions and what's in the works. I'll just say, good things are to come.
Great. Well, I don't think we're close to a standalone facility, to be completely transparent, that because of the downtown and some other large capital projects, it is longer ahead than it is shorter. So just really appreciate looking at that challenge and adjusting.
Well, and thank you, Members Scott and Johnson, for your support and for that recognition of that importance to our seniors too.
Great. Thank you. That's all I have at this time.
Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Johnson, please.
Yeah, I just want to turn around and thank all the staff so much. I go there seven days a week. I mean, they probably. But I just want to personally say, I've known Kendall for many years, even before I got on the council. And she's incredible. I mean, I just, I can't thank each and every one of you enough. My experience at NFC is always the best part of my day. I mean, and I just want to say, first of all, the lifeguards are amazing. I've actually made some really good friendships. Michelle Madoni taught me how to swim better. So I'm swimming faster because I'm training for a half triathlon. And it's just incredible. So I just want to thank all of you for that. And for you, for your leadership in the department, it's just incredible place. I just wanted to say that. One question I have, and I know my colleagues are going to think it's because of my love of the game, but it's not. And I know Garamella is probably going to beat me up about this.
You've transitioned to pickleball, right?
No, no. College tennis players can't play pickleball. The tennis wasn't mentioned as programming, was it? Or is it?
It's part of our racket sports.
Oh, racket sports, okay.
Correct.
And are we still using contracted vendors to do that, right?
Yes.
Those programs are going well and everything with adult? I was just curious.
Yes.
And eventually we're going to have pickleball. Are you doing clinics and stuff?
We are doing clinics and lessons with pickleball.
Okay, all right. So I just was curious about that. When we get a larger facility and we grow as a town, do you think trackout camps would also be something? Are we still seeing a demand for that? Or I haven't really kept up with that after COVID.
Whenever I started and the previous staff provided feedback on trackout is that it was hit or miss. And so when they did that analysis, it was to go away from it. The pendulum swings both ways. And so Cindy is working with staff to look at what are some kids' day out or teen day out whenever they're tracking out of school? So it may not be the duration of the time, but to add in that activity. So again, program enhancement is top of mind and we do see where there's an opportunity to connect for our youth center.
Okay, I mean, that's great. I think whatever we can do and then.
I'm sorry, Councilmember, can you?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
That's usually not a problem. As my colleagues know. The other, so in terms of, the final question I have is sponsorship programs and things like that. So we've come up with a policy. So is that a work in progress? And the reason I say that is that I'm very competitive. So like my goal is to get every member of every major gym to leave and join MAFC. Because I do think, I've gone to a lot of gyms kind of comparing and I think the professionalism is much better. And also the cleanliness of the facility, the pool and the gym is so clean. But I think many companies are looking, just like Mooresville, our healthcare costs keep going up. So is that something we're considering, like going to small businesses or any business and saying, look, you can sponsor this facility bypasses? Are we doing that now? Is that a work in progress and has the policy helped you do that?
Yes, it is a work in progress and we have two corporate businesses that we're working with for Boo Bash. Is it Spirit Mitchell? Um, Spirit Mitchell, they're coming in, I can't remember the classification, but at a thousand, $1,000 support level. I was looking, of course, Will is leading that charge and has brought that leaps and bounds forward. So yes, work in progress. Boo Bash is the first, the floodgates are soon to open.
Okay, that's fantastic. That's all I have for now. Thank you. Keep up the great work and really appreciate it.
Well, I can't wait to hear how successful you are with converting those other members at the other gyms of coming to MAFC. Staff kind of cringed a little bit, but I think it was a positive cringe. They welcome your enthusiasm.
Thank you.
So it sounds like we have capacity there.
Yes, and there are times where it's maxed out and then there's lulls. And so to put a finger on it and say, we have capacity for 1,000 more, that would not be, that would not bode as well. So we have to look at where can we fit in, whether it's pushing to a corporation to have their employees come like over lunch or if it's an extension of a program activity. But we may get that answer for you one day.
We can always build another facility.
Hey, y'all support it. We can envision it and dream it up, right?
Councilmember Johnson, followed by Mayor Pretend Garamella, please.
So I have said this before, councilors heard me say this. I love these department presentations for lots of reasons. Obviously, you get to shine and show all the hard work that the department's been doing. But the department members have all come and that has been really exciting for me personally, I think for all of us, to be able to tell each department how much we appreciate them and the work that you all do. And like you heard from my colleagues, Parks and Rec, your department, Mary, you touch everyone in this community.
Tell them, Liz.
You know, the police department, hopefully no one ever gets to meet a police officer. Fire department, hopefully they never show up at your house. But Parks and Rec, and I will tell you, so I've lived here almost 28 years. And my girls, I have two girls that were three and six when we moved here. And they were involved in all the programming way back then through Mooresville Parks and Recs Department. And I will tell you, I wish, I wish they had the programming that we have today. And of course, we were a smaller town back then too. So when I moved here, there were only 2,500 people. So there was only so much you can offer to a community of 2,500. But they were involved. So I have had the pleasure, and it really has been the pleasure, of being involved in all this programming from when they were children. Myself being and Kendall, hopefully, I haven't seen Kendall in many years, but I used to go to the Aquatics and Fitness Center semi-often. Now I get to go to the senior center. So I've kind of seen it all the way through all the different levels and ages that you all touch. And you do a phenomenal job, Mary. So yes, and you all do, I'm sorry, I'm like flipping back and forth here. You all do a phenomenal job because I'm really proud of the work that you all do and the programming that you offer. So you should be proud. I know, I know, we clap for them, we clap for you two, but Mary, you're doing an incredible job and I just want you to hear that from me.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of questions and Vicky kind of touched on it too with the surveying, that's kind of important. The senior center surveying them, I had already put in some information about that. We talked about that at council a couple of meetings ago. You talk though about being creative in your programming. And I think that's really, I was really happy to hear that because I think that's really important for us in all the work we do at council and across all departments. But clearly, and you nailed it, we only have so many facilities, we only have so many parks. So I don't know if you can elaborate on that anymore and if there's more, you're already thinking about how to, and I don't know what that is or what that looks like. But if you have anything you can share with us.
So I'll start at this, this is where my mind went, is meeting and serving not only who are current participants, but also meeting and serving those that are underserved. And we don't know how we're underserving because they are not currently in our programming. But a place to start is adaptive recreation. So we're adding on amenities at our MCP playground where there's going to be inclusive features, where we had not had that previously. So that's an example of when we have the opportunity to create, I mean, that's a very large example. And it doesn't come along as it does with programming. So if I jump back into programming, we're looking at what's new, what's cutting edge. So is it a quilting class? Is it a cooking class? Is it a canvas painting class? How does it fit in with what we've heard, as you said, through surveying or through conversations where there's an interest? And then sometimes it's like throwing spaghetti against the wall. You do a cost analysis, you get your fees, you have a minimum number of participants to make the program go and then you try it. Sometimes it's going to work, sometimes you have to go back to the drawing board. So an untapped group of target audience are teens. And so there's lots of conversations about leadership classes, about mentoring, about fitness. But then the bigger picture is mental health that is so prevalent now in the forefront with our younger participants. So hopefully that gives you a little bit of a peek about how we take ingredients and craft it to enhance programming. Is it starts with a conversation? It involves trending, it looks at competition. It's also what can build us with our reputation? What can set us aside differently from other departments? And so programming can go in a vast way of directions. Another avenue is STEAM and what those programs look like. That would probably be very intriguing and something that our community would look for. But to start getting that creative juices flowing so that then we can meet our participants where they are and then also trying to reach those that we don't even currently connect with.
Yeah, yeah. So I made a note about when you talked about the tea, because you did, you landed on that for a minute. And we've always struggled with that, how to engage them. And I get very difficult age group because they have so many interests and there's so much going on in their lives. But that, the other thing, when you talked about having the different sports programming for girls and basketball, oh my, I would have loved that back in the day because that's not how it was.
Right.
At least for my children. It was, and that does not work. So I'm really happy. And I think over the years, if I recall, we even had softball, girls softball, we've tried. So to your point, you've got to try, see if there's interest and then, and then move on if it's not going to work. And so I guess that leads me to my other question about, you also mentioned about how events have a three-year life kind of to get off the ground.
Yep.
And so I was happy to hear that because I agree with you. It takes a while for something to catch on and for us to tweak it and make it better and whatever it needs. So but then there's time to let it go too. If it's not, because it's just going to suck resources away from all the other things we potentially could be doing, so.
Sounds like you got an opportunity, if we have a position, you're ready to join our recreation team.
No, thank you.
You got it, you got it, Liz.
You all do a great job, you don't need me.
Well, thank you. Let me correlate to the International Festival with that three-year framework. Last year, we had to cancel, but it was established the year before. But since last year, we had to cancel, this year's almost like starting over again.
Yep.
And so the clock, although that one to three years is the foundation for it, there's variability that occurs based on how the event comes to fruition.
Yeah, thank you for recognizing that too, because I think that's important. That does matter. And I've told Leslie, I've told Leslie this, the music in the parks that I have, as a parent, you never have a favorite. So I don't have a favorite, but I really like Music in the Park. And so, and that has, that takes a little while for that to catch on. I didn't, Leslie, it was fabulous. The last one this year was incredible, the crowd that was there. Yeah, so thank you for not giving up on that little event. And hopefully, hopefully that with time will do even better. Because Vicky talked about the seniors, the seniors love that event. We all come to that event. love that event. We all come to that event. So, um, and then the only other thing I really wanted to talk about just for a minute was, um, the registration. You, you talked about, and, and I, I bring in this up because I hear this, too, and I know you hear it, about the residents versus the non-residents, and I get it. And at M A F C, there's a member, too, that, that, it's another layer. Um, and you also talked, so I'm going to, you also talked about ActiveNet, and then you also talked about UPACE. So are, are we doing both of those?
Yep. So this is going to get a little technical.
Oh, well, okay. That's, that's fine. I can deal with technical, but we don't have to go technical if you don't want to.
Yeah, I'm not the IT expert. I've learned some things. Um, AtifNet is our point of origin for registration. AtifNet does not have a module or a component that serves the area of fitness classes. It can service a season. So if we were to say a fitness class was for five weeks, AtifNet is compatible. However, that is not how we present our fitness classes. So Sarah and staff researched platforms that align with registering for fitness classes weeks out where the fitness classes are variable. So, um, UPACE connects to AtifNet through API, and that's where my technology savviness stops. So where, um, AtifNet is weak and is not adding that module, they have certain companies that they will connect with who provide that service. And so UPACE is complementary, but it has to start with AtifNet.
Okay, got it, got it. Okay, all right. So, yeah, because it's, it's a semi nightmare.
It's not either or.
It's a semi nightmare right now. Because you are, well, obviously, you're right. It is better for, it is better for if you're signing up for a program over a couple of weeks, period. But it's really not good for, at least at the Senior Center, lots of complaints about that whole thing. And then you can't, you can't un, you can't unreserve, which is difficult, too.
Um, staff have found how there's like, um, when you build out a program, I mean, they're IT experts with every program because they're building that framework. So there's components of it turning on and off. And I actually sat with Schwanna, and we went through and realized that there was an opportunity that had been missed to where the participants can withdraw. That was missed several weeks ago, but it is in place now. So it takes, it takes a while.
You need to educate.
That's, that's education, awareness, it is constant. Yes. And then, you know, staff, it may be top of mind of the senior, but the staff aren't thinking in that direction. So the effectiveness of the communication is to make sure that there's some level setting, that it's not just a one and done. And so Laura and Schwanna, with the support of Billy, and with Cindy's guidance, they have talked about, maybe there needs to be an AtifNet Lunch and Learn on the calendar for some time now, so that there's always that refreshing and gives that seniors the opportunity so they don't feel like I'm doing something wrong. We don't want our senior participant to feel like they are missing out or doing anything wrong, or they feel like it's not working for them. It may be that they just haven't tried it again because their first experience, it created a pain point or frustration.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I hear you.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't use that for participation numbers for the Senior Center. I would not use, because I think it's totally, people are just showing, you know, "Sorry, you know, seniors, I'm just showing up. And I don't care whether I signed up or not, I'm just showing up."
Well, we've been pleasantly surprised that actually the numbers of the seniors that are going through AtifNet are high, and the ones who aren't using it are in the minority. Yep. So thank you. I really appreciate all of your comments and support.
I could, I could take up an hour myself, but I'll let Satish go.
I'll take three. First, I would say excellent presentation, and you put your heart into it. That's usually a testament of how much you like the department and all your people at eight, eight o'clock in the night, you know. Were you, were you mandated to stay, or was it voluntary?
Don't answer that question. Don't answer that question. It's a trap.
Who has to be up at M A F C in the morning?
I know.
Is, is, is M A F C still up, or? So, uh, it's interesting because, uh, Marshall Parks and Recs, my story with that was very short-lived, yeah, with my son. And it's a funny story. Uh, I put him in the soccer program, and, uh, he was running, I'm a, I like competitive sports, so he was running on the other side where the whole team was going on this side to go. He was, he was running and running on the other side. And I was yelling at him, "Go there, go there." And, uh, I got yelled by Rob Kent, who still is a very good friend of mine. I said, "I am the coach, you don't speak."
Stay in your lane.
Stay in your lane. So pretty much, after that, I said, "Now, if you have to run around the other side of the goal and not go this side, you're not going in." And that was pretty much.
Maybe you should have tried swimming, the individual sports, right, versus the team sports.
Yeah. So, so, but, uh, I still have the T-shirt, which, uh, was a yellow one that said, uh, "Not kind of Museum of Life Science." I don't know if you, at one time, that, that was like a shirt on the front. Yeah, it was, that was one of the sponsors, I think, but that was like, uh, pretty good. So I have, um, a lot of questions, I would say, you know. First, I like all the programming, but the thing that I miss is, uh, adult recreation sports, like volleyball, or, you know, basketball, I don't know, might be there, like with the new sand volleyball courts coming up. I think it would be good to run leagues there.
Did you say that loud enough for the athletic staff who's behind you to hear?
Yeah.
Adult recreation.
It is there. Okay. Uh, so, yeah, I think, uh, it would be good to have that, and, uh, because I see there is a good amount of, uh, need for that. Uh, because, and a lot of the people are going either to, um, Net Sports or some other places. So I think this would be good to create a sense of, I think, and, uh, that would be good. And also, I wanted to talk about the after-school program. I think it is good to relook, no, trackout programs, I mean to say, because all schools are now e-round, around. So a lot of parents keep on saying, the trend was different when you had Cedar Fork and others. Now with all the schools being e-round, Track Four, you know, like people who are coming from outside, they're not used to track. They said, "I don't know what to do with the kids," you know, like, "I want them out of my house."
Yeah.
So, so, so that, that is one.
You have captive ears. Um, both of our youth program specialists are in the audience. Quentin is out of town, or else he would have been here this evening. Um, so, more to come.
Thanks. Um, and then we are getting two new, like, the high school. So I think we should have the contracts with them, uh, with our programming very early on before someone else takes it over.
Okay.
This could open up track. Uh, we, we are getting tennis courts and, you know, softball and all kinds of amenities that we are getting free. I'm not saying free, but it's like, there will be times where we can program in. And I think to have that advantage, including basketball courts and everything, so that is a blessing for us, especially having a Marshall High School coming up. That would be a good one. And, uh, I also wanted to say, like, this came from Senator Chowdhury. Uh, he has gone to pools all around, and he says, "M A F C is one of the best that I've ever been," you know. He really loves it. He says, "I think nothing comes closer to it as far as cleanliness and how good, especially the roof and everything is." And I just wanted to let you guys all know. Um, then I had a question on, obviously, advertisements and sponsorship you are looking at. Um, I know we have contracts with, uh, T C L Core, or whatever the other one is. But also, we need to encourage the players who play for the U S national team. For example, this mother of, who is the captain of the women's team called me, um, if the kids could use, um, the pitches, um, because, uh, October 1st week, they're going to Namibia to play international. And they just wanted to practice, and they're not part of T C L because that is gone. They're not part of any of the things. They play for the national team. I think we should have some kind of reservation because we want to encourage people going up. And I think the, the practice pitches will come very, very handy. And, uh, I think having programming, you'll see that full all the time.
I, I appreciate, um, that comment and your support. That, um, fee structure is in place. Now, we're just excited and waiting for that construction project to go across the finish line.
Absolutely. And, um, and then, um, my last question is, no, a couple of questions, like, why is it 1:30, 2:30, is it closed? I've never been to M A F C, but like, it's a whole hour when people, I want to come at some point.
So it's been reduced to three hours now, and it's just the pool. And so everything that you just mentioned in comparison to other facilities, that one hour makes a difference to be able to clean and maintain during the day. So staff and I had lots of conversations, um, with encouragement about thinking differently about the facility. Because for the facility, that entrance, um, during the midday for the 30 minutes of where they were cleaning, a solution there was put in a place where now we have contracted maintenance that comes during the day. So we didn't subtract, we maintained. However, at the pool, that's a specialized amenity. It takes a skill set of our staff. They have, um, thought differently to reduce from the seven days just to the three days. But it absolutely conveys why the facility is as pristine and welcoming and clean as it is. So it's different than just cleaning after hours and during the morning. There's so much usage throughout the day that having those points during the week make a difference.
So if you want any less, I want to put a motion to M C R S D Ra doesn't go there anymore.
You heard he's seven days.
Yeah, exactly. That, that, that's bothering me.
Well, Satish, you're not going to get your wish. He's still going.
And, and the other thing, I think, um, this is something I had told Mark a long time ago. Um, any opportunities that we could get to buy any facilities, like I kept on saying, "Why don't we buy Net Sports?" It's, so she said, "Carrie." I said, "How does it matter?" You know, if, once we've bought it, it is like, you don't have to pay taxes, but it's under, for the Marshall. But, uh, those kind of things, especially, um, around the perimeter area, there's a lot of retail, like, you know, office space which are going up. So would be good to have that kind of facility, at least we get it, that it would attract the corporate people who are coming and have gyms and those kind of things. I think, um, just food for thought because, uh, that people needed more. And I think I can't thank you guys enough because we're only 10 square miles. You know, as much as we want to compare with Carrie, we are not Carrie. Uh, their tax is bigger, but we provide the best that we can within our things. And, uh, honestly, like, with all the departments, Parks and Recs is the only thing that people like, along with, uh, along, uh, 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 no, no, I'm, no, no, see, that, see, and, and, and public works because the trash has to be cleaned up. I'm, 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 I'm not, I'm not telling anything to fire. I'm not telling anything to police because that's a B A U, uh, activity, you know. But I think it is important because it touches a lot of people if you don't walk on the trail. Like Steve cannot come seven days, he will get, you know, some kind of a thing. And it is, it is important because people love the facilities. People love, you know, playing every Sunday morning. All these kids are going, uh, Saturday morning, going for soccer or baseball. I think that sets a set of cohesiveness that it is a small town. And I appreciate that.
Well said. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now it's my turn. Um, I want to say thank you very much. It was a really good presentation. Love your staff, all the smiles. I'm glad that it's augmented in its right size now because it's been too small for too long. When we moved into town in 2007, I spent a lot of time with Brian Ray. I went through the drafts and stuff. I was a coach in basketball and things like that. And, um, you guys have really upped the game for the area. I mean, what we do, we do really well, the clean facilities, the great programming, and we're expanding the programming. So just really appreciate that. So I, um, and what I really like is how we're unique about, we have racquetball and we have pools, have a pool. And a lot of people don't have that. So that really sets us apart and makes us more of an attraction. But, um, the way I sort of do things, I, I kind of hone in on things I see as opportunities, and I sort of throw them over the fence. So you don't need to react to all this stuff.
Lob them.
But, but I lob. Um, so Armstrong McGuire, is that the person who's going to help us with the new strategic plan?
Mission, vision, values.
Okay, sounds good. Um, so slide 10 had all the different cricket stuff and stuff's going on. Cedar Fork Community Park, I see people practicing there a lot, too. So that might be something that we can add in as an amenity, just to sort of capture that. CFCC, the Teen Center unofficial, I think that would be great if we sort of make that space. I remember first moving into Carrie and going to Herb Young Center, and they had a foosball table and a ping pong table just in the lobby, and people would just be playing. Um, so if we just threw those kind of things out there, I think table tennis would be a real opportunity for us to provide something for people to do just in a drop-in basis. I always thought, like, in the racquetball courts when they're not being used, if you roll something in, uh, that would be used a lot. On slide 15, there's a green utility box in the background. On our properties, I think that could be the next mural setup. Just paint all those things kind of cool, and that's really low-hanging fruit. Um, slide 17, we're bursting at the seams. Uh, M A F C often goes outside for some classes. I don't know of the Senior Center. They have the, the roadway back in the back. Um, there's a lot of sidewalk out front. Um, so that might be an opportunity to get people outdoors when the weather's okay. Um, one small thing, this is more for Brandon to consider, is for the boobash, maybe some mosquito treatment beforehand. Um, I know dragonfly right now is just overrun with mosquitoes. So I don't want our, um, next event, our boobash, to be affected. I don't want people talking about mosquitoes instead of the fun they had. Um, table tennis, is, there going to be a disc golf metrics report or something? Or maybe you can just email us, email us that, how's that going?
Sure.
What are thoughts in the future?
With dragonfly?
Sure. Yeah, I think that would be nice. Um, pop-up playgrounds, uh, it's kind of like what Marbles does. They do it internally in a room. They just throw a lot of stuff and let kids play. So that might be an opportunity for us to do that around different parks or, um, during events, things like that. If we had some more play things for the kids during the Music in the Park, instead of running around in front of the stage, they can be active. Um, I really love the idea of bouncy houses. They're so family-friendly. So whenever we have an event, I felt it was kind of missing from the International Festival. There wasn't really that much for kids to do. We don't need a carnival like we had for lots of other festivals, but that's just a thought. Um, and I love how you guys are all succession planning and having things happening within the, the team. Uh, the team now has room to grow and to build on itself, and empowering each other is really important. So I think, um, one of your values might end up being fun, um, and promoting it. Because when I first moved into town, I think it was, "We build community," or "We grow community." That was the tagline on the shirts. Um, and I still think that you guys are doing that really well.
Thank you.
So just very proud of our Parks and Rec Committee.
Thank you.
It's one of the top 12 departments, I think, something like that.
And then, like, um, your other council members, if you will, give that praise to the staff behind you.
Oh, through you, it gets to them. But, um, yeah, you guys are all these happy-smiling faces. Um, so it's nice to see you. And, um, I still remember the days of Kendall, like, working as hard on the exercise bikes. I haven't done that for a long time, but I'm sure you're still doing it. And congratulations on your ride. That was very impressive.
Thank you for all your comments.
Um, so everyone's had one chance. If you want to... So everyone's had one chance. If you want to react to that, does anyone else have any other thoughts? Uh, yeah, let's circle back. We'll do it in the same order. Councilmember Johnson.
I have one more question, Mary. You talked about how the Cedar Fork Gym is getting a lot of rentals. So is that outside of us or a lot of use, outside of us or for us?
It's, it's picking up an appeal, and it's not just the gym, but the classroom. Is the room to the left a multi-purpose room? And Quentin is also working with staff to promote it for birthday parties. And again, staying in that concept and theme of youth. So we did some facilitating of moving one group out of CFCC to HCC to open up space that it can be rented. Now, to your question about over the course of the past, like renters for large events, that was outside entities beyond just parents and groups coming in. It was, you know, big community-type featured event that was looking for multiple rooms and space where there was a blood drive that was also held on the grounds.
Okay, but that's not conflicting with what you all want to do.
We give our program in first priority. Thank you for asking that question. Yes, I appreciate that. That's where your mindset was, too.
There's Tim Garaman. The night one more thing to throw over the fence.
Yeah, just thinking out of the box, we have an excellent facility, weight competition center. Is there any kind of a collaboration that the town can do? In fact, ice hockey, we don't have it. But if we can have some kind of a program with them, obviously, the expense will be higher to whatever it is. So people will be more interested.
Yes, I'm going to say yes, and that Parks and Recreation as a profession provides the programming to not compete with the private sector. However, that is changing because that concept, once upon a time, when Parks was in the heyday, who was the competitor? The Y, the Boys and Girls Club. And now that is elevating into the competitive private industry, like the weight tech competition, like our contractual partners that are renting space, whether it's cricket, whether it's soccer, or whether it's tennis. Did you hear that, member Ralph? Tennis. He's not paying any attention, is he? And so as a profession, it's trending in that direction. It's just different from where we have grown out of. And obviously, when you're a community partner, you're looking to see, how do you complement? How do you feel the demands and the needs?
Yeah, and actually, that's where my question, and I was going to was because, say, superior gymnastics. You can't compete with that. Okay, so they're, they're good, you know, they're, they're quality. But if you have some kind of a program, hey, you want, you know, with Towne and Morrisville, one day is the kids can all go and see. And obviously, that will is a, we are actually creating a business for them because the kids will say we like it and the parents will go. So, which is fine. And you're just, we can't hold everything.
That's right.
And even with the, the weight competition center is, a normal kid does not get a chance to go play ice hockey. But if you're giving that opportunity and the kid clicks, example, my kid who never played soccer and he wanted that, at least that opportunity opens up from the town side with a collaboration. As I said, once in a quarter or something, you're opening up, and then people who like will go there.
Yeah, I appreciate that perspective. I also want to add that with youth programming and summer camp, there are avenues that open up with the trips and the experiences that the staff try to seek out those experientials. It may be a one-time, but it does start to introduce the children to it that may not have otherwise had the opportunity.
And especially what are those, go-karting and other things around? You know, that's, that's kind of a destination that creates. And lastly, I wanted to ask, you might be getting a lot of requests from all kinds of people and all kinds of things. What is that you think you're lacking from our town point of view? You know, it's, I'm not saying we want it, but I don't hear that. So might be you and your staff might be hearing that, right? It will be always good to know, to keep an eye on. So are those kind of requests that you keep getting?
Again, I, I don't want to say too much, but I would like to spotlight Little League. As you all know, that Little League is growing. We had a very positive affirmation to our staff. And in order for it to continue to take off, we're quickly approaching capacity because we have the two fields. And so where can we have the opportunity for another field?
By 2026, you'll have the Morrisville Park, Morrisville High School.
And then it comes to the partnership. Yes, it sounds like there's opportunities, but then, just like we take first right for our programming, the school takes first right for their programming. And then they also like to look at it differently. So that's just an example. But there's others that are like that. So it stems back to how to run the successful program within the facilities that we have or looking to the future of how do you bring those on?
I think just wanted to know if there's aha, oh, this is something people are asking that we are not.
Well.
But I know there's, you'll get a laundry list, but I just wanted to.
Yep. Another framework that guides trends within our profession are Olympic sports. And the fact that the States are hosting the Olympics in '28. So there's also coming online with cricket and with, which we're already, you know, in that wheelhouse. But there's others out that are catching up to that. And then there's also flag football. So that's the conversation I felt like.
No breakdancing?
I'm not going to touch that one.
All right, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had one other thing that I noted. Our Morrisville Central app, could ActiveNet and/or UPACE sort of be embedded in that? If we could bring one thing.
Say that one more time.
Embed a button to ActiveNet and to UPACE within Morrisville Central. We're trying to drive people to our app, so if that's an easy place for them to get to the next thing also, that's just a thought.
Yes. And then within UPACE as an app itself, I hear what you're saying, drive it to ours. We're also trying to bridge and connect people back to ActiveNet. So whenever they go to UPACE, we realize some people may go there and they don't realize they're supposed to have an ActiveNet account. So we're working, Sarah with staff is working with those developers to make sure that there's a tie back to ActiveNet there. And then Katie is our point person with IT about looking at our Smart City app and what features can we have. And she is working currently with all of the monitors that are at MAFC and the senior center to have the same messaging digitally going across those. And then she will be able to update it remotely. So again, a little bit off the topic of an app, but in that same mindset of thinking innovative and technology at your fingertips to best service the community.
Yeah, like a single sign-on, just make it easy and seamless.
Path of least resistance, right? You don't want cumbersome layers.
Councilmember Ralph, and then if anyone else has something, please put their things up.
Yeah, just two things. I loved what Mary, Tim Garaman had, you know, had a really good point about collaborating with different, you know, organizations. So like, if, you know, for like, weight competition center, like hockey, we have so many professional sports that are coming in the region, whether it's soccer or hockey. They, we could do like, you know, they could come to our facilities. We, you know, our families can meet these great athletes, and they could teach them about life and sports. Even tennis, I mean, Tiafoe and Brian Shelton were here two years ago playing in Cary. And they were both in the semifinals of the US Open this year. And these are guys that came here, Chris Eubanks. I mean, we could bring them here. So I think to the extent that we get them, us working more with cities, different towns on different professional sports would be great. The second thing is, one feedback I got on the International Festival, and I'm sorry I missed it this year, I was traveling. But like, you know, I heard it was great, obviously, and I know a couple of people were there. But thousands of people were there. But one thought is, you know, like, sort of like the International Focus, International Festival, could there be an effort to get, like, you know, and maybe these countries were there, but like Greece and Bulgaria and Africa, I mean, getting really like more of all the continents represented, which might be just partnering with, they had one, they moved to the Raleigh Convention Center, and then something happened, and after COVID, it went away. So that was like the fall International Festival. So it'd be nice to see how we could find out what happened to that and bring that back. So we've already got a nice one here because we're such a global, international town. So just some, somebody emailed me about that, and I just thought I would really do it.
Thank you for coming in, man.
That just reminded me, yeah, yes, it was fabulous, but to add more diversity to the event, even with the vendors, that, I have heard that as well. So I think we have a, we have a very diverse community here. And when they don't see themselves represented, they take that to heart. So I think we have to be really mindful of that.
Yep. And I'll share with you guys, too, and I think you will agree, the International Festival and Town Center, there's going to be a convergence there to where that event is going to take on a new life. And you're really going to start to see exactly what you're talking about. I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, staff, but I'm excited to see that kind of fruition.
I'd like to recognize Town Manager Zudema at this time.
So I'm going to stand just for a second so I can see everybody and they can see me. I usually don't comment on department presentations, but this one's a little different. So first, I want to compliment Mary. Excellent presentation. I think covered so many good things. And I want to say thank you and congratulations, and I love you to this staff. We've been through a lot in the last four or five years. Those of you who have been here, yes, oh my God, I know Kendall. We've had some really challenging conversations. We've had some really good conversations. You all stuck through it. I think, I hope you would agree, we've gotten to a better place. You know, I think Mary being here and Cindy being here and people stepping up and taking on additional responsibilities and moving into new roles has been fantastic. So thank you for that. Appreciate you and really appreciate you being here. And I think that's a great sign of support for Mary. But it also shows the council, you know, who, again, who you are and that you are a team and really in this together. To the council, I just want to say thank you. This is obviously not your typical 30-minute presentation. But almost a year ago, we had some conversations and you challenged me a little bit. And so then I came back and challenged you a little bit, and and I think we both stood up. I hope you will agree to that challenge. And you made a significant investment in this department. And so while it would be easy for me to show up and say, they're doing great things, thank you, how much better is it to see all of them here and to hear all of this good work from Mary? And so thank you for the extra time. I thought it was worthwhile. Really important to show you that your investment, I think, has paid off. I think this is rapidly becoming the department you've envisioned for probably quite a number of years. And there is just a lot of good things happening. And this group behind you are the people, along with Mary, obviously, doing that. So thank you.
Hold him responsible, and I'm sure he gets a good bonus for all of it.
Mary, you get the last word.
To follow Brandon, right? Again, the, the heart behind the eyes. So I'll be brief and say that with the quote, "Love what you do and you'll never work a day in your life." I feel like I embody that. I feel like the staff and the team embodies that. We love what we do. It's new and different every day. But through our service, it's felt, and we are really excited for what's to come. So thank you for your continued support, mayor and council. I cannot express enough, Brandon, where we've been, where we've gotten, across senior leadership. And then to all of you, thank you.
10-minute break now, but so we'll reconvene at 8:35. What I request is if the members of your staff would just go up top. We'd love to get a picture underneath that slide, just commemorate, because this was a special night. Does that sound good? So if you guys would all go up there, and then you can go home and get on with your lives. If we could just move those three chairs, I'll just move my, I'll use my camera and just give it to you guys. So we'll be back, back in 10 minutes, okay, everybody? And we'll do roundtable.
Nope. For roundtable? We said the rule is in advance. The rule is you submitted by the deadline.
Okay, we're coming back into session. Our next discussion item is the Town Council Roundtable. And I'd like to recognize Giselle Rodriguez, Deputy Town Manager, who will lead the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. We had, um, on the list, we have three items for discussion this evening. One of the items is, was submitted by Councilmember Robati. Since she is not here, we will defer that item until the next roundtable. So we have two additional roundtables. And then the first one to be brought up tonight will be by Councilmembers Craig and Johnson. You can present your item, I can. I'm gonna try to.
That's helpful.
That better?
Yes, so, um, thank you, Council, for consideration of this item. My item is regard to senior transportation, specifically to the senior center from some of our senior communities. And I think there's also an interest in expanding not just the Morrisville Senior Center, but the Luther Green, um, senior community, um, as well. Recently, within the past several months, we did have members of the Briar Point community come speak to the council and ask if a node location could be added to their community as the nearest node location is now at Cedar Four Community Center, which in all times of the year is quite a walk. And, um, they wanted to have access to the Morrisville Senior Center with its programming and its offerings. And, um, they have, um, due to the fact that they're a senior center, they don't necessarily have, uh, regular access from their community. So I was hoping that we would consider adding a node to Briar Point and the other senior communities that we have. And as maybe Briar Point is a trial, if you don't feel comfortable adding it to all senior communities at this time. But also, at the same time that we add Briar Point, that we also add Luther Green. And Luther Green is unique in that it is a meals-on-wheels community program for seniors that can convene and eat a meal together. And they currently all have transportation by private vehicles so that they can meet and, um, spend time together as a community. But if we offered a node, we might see more participation in that community setting, and they could expand some of that offering to people that currently cannot participate. So there's an opportunity there. I open it up for discussion, I could go on and on, but I just wanted to hear your thoughts.
I'd support directing staff to go ahead and look into it. I'd also ask if there's, instead of necessarily having it be part of the smart shuttle, if there's some à la carte to reach our senior programming. But if we do create nodes, I think if they don't get used, they don't really tax.